So, welcome everyone. This is the February 28th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen. We had a brief executive session at 5:45. We've got an appointment with Peter Newton from Bristol Engineering Advisors to provide his review of the Harvest Farm water use. Upon completion of all of the items that we have in open session today, we will be returning to executive session for a, to talk about a public records request for executive session material. So, we are not quite at 6:30 yet, but we should be there momentarily. And I don't think we've got enough time to, oh, there we are, 6:30. Okay, Peter, it's now 6:30. So, Mark, did you want to do an intro of Peter?
Sure, thank you. And thrilled that you're here, Peter. Thank you so very much. So, just a very tiny sort of introduction, a little over a decade ago, some decisions were made in town which allowed the Rocky Harvest Company to harvest water in town. They may well, they are perceived by many as a misguided decisions. The town kind of fought that decision for 10 years. And for those that don't know, in town, we have spent over the last 10 years well over $100,000 fighting this thing. The courts have not been at all sympathetic. Along the way, just because of concern about all of this, at annual town meeting last year, we asked for a modest appropriation to spend a little bit of money having a hydrogeologist explore Rocky Harvest reporting and to give us to some extent, the degree that they could, a sense of the impact of this harvesting of water. So, Peter Newton is a hydrogeologist who's worked for the town before, for the Open Space Committee and the Water Subcommittee and done wonderful work. And we were thrilled that he would take on this project. Peter has supplied us, the Board of Selectmen, with a letter summarizing his analysis. I thought what we might do tonight is ask Peter for sort of the one paragraph executive summary and then an opportunity for Board of Selectmen to ask additional questions to see if there was anything that they would like embellished or fleshed out. So, hey, so Peter, if you would, maybe just a brief summary of your findings would be appreciated.
Sure, all right. Well, thank you, Mark. And I was thrilled when you reached out to me this fall to look into this. So, as you guys know, there's a great deal of information. There's been a long history with, between the state and Harvest Farms. Unfortunately, for a number of reasons, one, one big one being COVID and the inability to actually go into the state offices and review the boxes and boxes of documents. This review is really focused on those documents that I was able to obtain. The DEP was very, they were very helpful. And they did send over some of the documents, the permitting documents, the public record documents, basically the the application that Harvest Farms filed for the public water supply and, and a couple of years of annual statistical reports. So, they are authorized to withdraw up to 100,000 gallons a day. Now, the water management, I say authorized, they fall under, below the threshold for the Water Management Act to apply. And the Water Management Act is where regulations and, and the state really gets involved in monitoring the withdrawals, testing, requiring enhanced testing of, of the withdrawals and additional reporting. Because the Water Management Act is triggered at 100,000 gallons per day or 70 gallons per minute, and Harvest Farms has not asked for that volume of water, they fall below the threshold for the state permit. Now, they are regulated as a public water supplier because they provide water to the public. And that's a different, it's a different set of regulations that are managed through the regions, through the Southeast region as opposed to the Water Management Program in Boston. The new source approval process that assigns them an approved rate. They have an, they have an approved rate of, I, let's see if I remember the number. The 50 gallons a minute, I believe, is the, is the rate. So, below the 70, 70 gallons a minute, less than, you know, it's, so it's about 72,000 gallons per day. As long as they don't exceed that 72,000 in any given day, and what I should say, as long as they don't report that they exceeded 72,000 gallons per day, they are not subject to notice of non-compliance. They're not really subject to any state enforcement under the New Source Approval Program, which is also the Clean Water Act. Is, which is, was provided, was established under the Clean Water Act. Their water use has been creeping up over the last few years. So, I managed to look at five years of their statistical reports of what they reported to the state. Their average use in 2016 was 23,682 gallons per day, increasing to 46,519 in 2020. The 2021 data should be with the state soon. So, it wasn't available when, when I prepared my letter. But I'm sure I, you know, as soon as they, I believe they're required to submit that by the end of the first quarter of 2021, 22. So, they probably sometime in the next 30 days or so, they will, they'll be submitting that to the state. And we can take a look at that when it arrives. Their max day in 2020 was 65,000 gallons per day. So, now, the New Source Approval Program regulates what the well is allowed to physically pump. Okay, where the Water Management Act is a vol, is a, is a, is a volume, a total volume withdrawn. So, it's an average. So, Harvest Farms has not yet, has not reported they have exceeded the 72,000 gallons per day that they're approved under this New Source Approval Program. So, they're not under, under the the New Source Approval Program with Mass DEP, they are not in any violations. All right. So, so that's the information that I have on, on, on what they've reported to the state. Now, I also looked at their, their application for the New Source Approval, this WS-13 or WS-15, which is actually the one where they submitted for, for, to get authorization to construct the well. And because again, the 70 gallons per minute is a threshold value, approving a well that's greater than 70 gallons a minute is a much more complicated and time-consuming and involved process than, than approving a well that's less than 70 gallons a minute. It's, the, the testing is much less involved. The water quality testing is, is basically the same. But what we, what we have to do to demonstrate that the well is capable of yielding the rate they want for a long period of time is significantly less involved for, for the smaller wells. So, they had to do a 48-hour pump test and demonstrated to the, to DEP's satisfaction that the well stabilized and was able to pump at 50 gallons a minute or 72,000 gallons per day for an extended period of time. It wasn't the most thorough report, pump test report I've ever seen. But again, there's a lot of these wells that are under 70, 70 gallons a minute that, that are not tested to the same level, the same degree that a big municipal scale well would be, where that would be pumped for between five and 10 days and monitor, water quality monitored continuously. A much broader network of monitoring wells to monitor how the pumping is affecting the aquifer in the vicinity and distant from the well. That really isn't required under these smaller, under these smaller wells. So, so, you know, I guess the short answer is, there's nothing that I could see in the documents that are reviewed that says what they're doing is not consistent with what the state would require. But the caveat there is everything, you know, from approval forward relies on them to submit their own documentation to the state. And frankly, the state doesn't have the resources to, you know, to audit these folks and go in and check their meters are reading properly. They are required to submit a meter report every couple of years. They say they calibrated their, their water meters. You know, but, but it's basically they're relying on the, you know, on, on Harvest Farms and all these smaller water systems to self-report. And I think that's, that's basically the gist of, of my letter, that there's nothing that I found in the, you know, in the documents that, that says they're not doing what the state requires them to do.
So, a couple of questions for me, I guess. And I, one is what we should be doing going forward to continue to keep an eye on the situation. And, and then my other question is, I fully recognizing that a full analysis would be quite expensive. And without putting you on the spot, I'm wondering if you can kind of comment on, there's a lot of concern in town that a huge amount of water is being withdrawn and that we're at risk for all of our wells to run dry. And I, I, we want to be vigilant. At the same time, we don't want to be overly concerned. So, I'm wondering to the degree to which you're willing or able to make a comment on the impact of the withdrawal at the levers that are going on.
So, the, you know, the, the aquifer that the wells are, the well is set in is pretty productive aquifer. There's a large, large volume of water in the ground and it's very permeable material. So, rainfall infiltrates readily. The, the rule of thumb that we used to use when we're looking at just yield, a well yield is about a half a million gallons per day, per square mile, is what, is what. When we look at a capture zone for a well, that would be, that would be a rule of thumb that we would use to say, all right, well, we know we have a watershed that is, you know, 50 square miles. So, you know, 50 times a half, you know, 25 million gallons a day. Is it theoretical yield that we could get without significant impacts to the aquifer? Now, that, that goes back pre-watershed groups. Okay, that goes back a long way. That, that thinking has changed quite a bit to, with the consideration of stream flow. Back in the days, back when things were simple, people wanted to know that they had good, abundant, clean drinking water. Now, my job is so much more complicated than just finding clean drinking water. It's also demonstrates, identifying what knock-on effects that withdrawal has on stream flow, on wetlands and species, you know, bugs and bunnies, habitat. And it's become, you know, it's, it's a much more complicated analysis now to, to address those questions, which is, you know, they're appropriate questions to ask. So, that half a million gallons a day per square mile is no longer really inappropriate. Now, it's not appropriate in places like Ipswich where you can have a large watershed, but there isn't that much outwash deposit. You know, so there isn't that much aquifer storage. The aquifers are thin, they're narrow, and there's, you know, and there is, there isn't the same kind of recharge that we have here. So, I don't know if I'm, if I'm getting off on a tangent, but but in my opinion, looking at wells that are not too far away and Wareham and, and Plymouth, where there are wells that pump between 750,000 and 1.5 million gallons per day. 60,000 gallons per day is not a well that would be expected to cause significant adverse effects. And I did do a very kind of back of the envelope estimate of what we would expect the drawdown in, in the nearest private well to be. And it was around two tenths of a foot. And, and frankly, that's probably not real noticeable. It, you know, in a, two tenths of a foot is really probably the, the noise in the signal and where people are, you know, in somebody's well. So, I, it doesn't seem to me likely that, that if they're pumping at the rates they're reporting, that there should be significant impacts in, you know, to homeowners or private wells nearby. But again, Mark, that's just based on, you know, 10,000-foot look, you know, and, and based on the information that I've, that I've seen. I haven't, wasn't able to get testimony from any of the homeowners that, that, that might, you know, shed some light on some, on their own anecdotal experience. It's really just what they've submitted to the state from a permit, permitting and compliance standpoint.
How big is the aquifer when you talk about it?
So, you believe they're in the Plymouth Carver Aquifer and it's, it's really big. Okay. And it's thick. There are spots in the Plymouth Carver Aquifer that are almost 200 feet deep, 200, 200 feet thick where, you know, there's 200 feet of water saturated thickness. And the, the aquifer is probably over, you know, 100, 100 square miles. So, there's a lot of water in that aquifer.
If, so ours sounds kind of puny, but what could come in that say Wareham and Plymouth that would impact the aquifer enough to make a problem for us?
Well, it's a fair question. I mean, so, well Plymouth doesn't really have much of a, I mean, if Plymouth really started pumping, if they, if they established a, a public water system to feed the entire town, which would be, I mean, it would be expensive for Plimpton to do. Plymouth is so spread out and such a large town, it would be, I mean, we'd be talking about hundreds of millions of dollars that they would have to invest. So, so, you know, putting that aside, if they were to start pulling 10 to 15 million gallons a day, if they, if they had that requirement, one is very questionable whether the state would approve that much withdrawal because of the other knock-on effects to the rip, to the stream flow and, and other, you know, the habitat. And, you know, Wareham is already, already permitted to withdraw three to four million gallons a day. So, they're not exceeding their permit. And, you know, if, if they were to substantially increase their withdrawal, that, you know, that, it would take a lot, it would take a lot to start affecting that aquifer in a substantial.
So, even looking, I would say, 25, 30 years, which is what a contract runs, there's nothing out of the ordinary that would raise some sort of an alarm.
Well, I mean, you know, Wareham, there's, there's that proposal such as it is. I don't know that it's ever going to go anywhere, but for the racetrack and, and a large development, casino development of some sort in, in, I think it's West Wareham. I don't have no idea. I, I've only seen that in the paper as somebody's proposing it. But I could see that using a lot of water, but they would probably go to the town of Wareham or the Wareham Fire District to get their water. And they would, Wareham Fire District, it would be under severe constraints to force them to optimize their water use as much as possible because Wareham, the fire district needs to get their permit renewed. And the state is, makes, makes increasing the, your approved yield, your, your permitted withdrawals a very complicated and time-consuming, expensive process to, to answer all the questions that would be, that would be raised. So, if, if I were to, if, if I were to answer the question in a more global stance, global manner, the biggest threat I would think to Plimpton's aquifer and to this aquifer is land use. It's, it's, it's herbicides, pesticides, it's impervious surface, it's road salt. And, and this new compound that some of you may or may not have heard about is PFAS coming, which is, I think, in case of, you know, a relatively suburbanized area or undeveloped areas, mostly going to be coming from septic systems. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are of concern. But I, it's my opinion that there's plenty of, of water available. It's just the quality of the water and, and what we're doing to it before it gets into the ground.
How, how often does the water get tested that Rocky Harvest takes out? Is it once a year or, or is it tested?
Yeah. So, I don't know. I didn't, I wasn't provided that information, but it is tested. They do, they are required to test. And that, because it's a, because it's a bottling facility, it's, it's a different group at DEP that reviews it. It's regulated by the FDA, not, not the EPA. So, if, you know, if Plimpton wanted a public water supply for its citizens, that water supply would be governed by the Clean Water Act, which is administered by the EPA, which has delegated responsibility in Massachusetts to, to the state DEP. Okay. So, that's the chain for, for a public water supply that, you know, where we have pipes in the ground and we're sending water out to customers. If you're taking that water and bottling it for commercial use, that's not regulated by the FDA. It's kind of a quirk, but.
It's still tested for pesticides and all that.
In all likelihood, it's tested for pesticides. And, and there is some, so this, there are some, you know, every now and then a community gets impacted by contamination. A well comes offline or you have a boil order. You know, I'm sure you've heard of boil water orders where there might be bacteria in the system and they, they issue, do not drink and boil it. And while that's happening, these, you know, water systems generally provide bottled water to their customers. Now, the state has required that anybody, any bottled water that is being provided by a public water system in response to a boil order or some other emergency has to have been, has to been tested in accordance with Mass DEP's protocols. It has to have been tested to, you know, for at a frequency and for the compounds that Mass DEP requires. So, and, and that has to already be signed off on, right? So, these water, bottled water companies that want to be part of that program have to submit laboratory analysis to, to the state to be approved to be in that program.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Sure.
So, the, the thing we should be doing is each year checking with DEP on the, the annual reporting of volume and max per day.
Correct.
Anything else we should be doing?
I mean, anything else you should be doing? I, you know, Mark, I mean, that's, that's really the only thing that you have available to you. You know, short of, I, I, I don't think there's anything really else you should be doing, keeping an eye on it. And, you know, to be honest with you, DEP is understaffed and overworked. So, this annual statistical report, when they submit it, is going to go into a folder or it's going to go into their database. And it's going to sit there and it'll be, and it'll be put on somebody's list to review. And they may or may not ever get to it to take a look at it. And it's, it's just a fact, a fact of the fact, you know, that they just don't have enough staff now. They've lost some, you know, people to, to retirement. A lot of people have retired recently that they're not getting back. And the folks that are left are, are, you know, pulling their hair out. They're so busy. So, to, to make sure that you make it known that you're interested in this and that you want to be CC'd on the submittals and be notified when, whenever they make a submittal to the state, it's public record. So, you have, you have a right to, to look, to see it, to review it. And, and just to keep tabs on it. And if you see something, you know, then we can call up the state, say, hey, did you notice this? You know, and they'll go, oh, no. And they'll tell me that, oh, I'm really sorry. I'm just so busy. I didn't get a chance to look at that. It's on my list, is what they'll say. But, um, but, but if we bring it to their attention and there is a, there is something that causes us concern, then they will act on it.
And I guess last question for me, all of this being predicated on accurate reporting. Is, there's nothing we can do about that?
Well, not really. We can ask for their, for the lot, for their meter calibration records, which are not in the statistical report, but, you know, they're required to submit those to the state as well. And just, you know, I mean, ultimately, there's, that's, I mean, I don't know that they would give it to you, but you could ask for what they're selling. You know, you could ask for their, you know, for their, their end report of what they're selling, you know, their sales, sales receipts, but they probably don't have to give that to you. And, you know, you can cross-check what they're, say they're selling with what they're, you know, what they, what they say they're pumping.
I think we tried that once, actually. Didn't get very far.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't think you would, but, you know.
Any questions, Christine?
Well, you, you got into my question, Mark, was basically, you know, do we have any, anything we can do to, to monitor this more closely? I'm happy to hear that they're in compliance with their meter reporting requirements. That's great to hear. But it would be nice to have some verification that they are, in fact, pulling what they are reporting that they're pulling. So, you know, even years back when we had gravel removal permits, we had, we did inspections. And there, I just feel like there is a total lack of oversight that the town has been given. Any requests that we had to, to get a meter in there or have oversight was rejected. So, I just, you know, feel like we're kind of at the mercy of, of them, you know, what they're saying or doing what they're saying they're doing.
I'm sympathetic to that, Christine. I, I think that the, the difference between soil removal and water removal, as quirky as that may sound, is that one is a local jurisdiction, one is a state jurisdiction. So, you, you know, in the, in the soil removal, your soil, you know, your, your soil board or whatever the terminology is can, you know, as a condition of their permit can require inspections. Now, DEP is a condition of their permit, kind of does require inspections, but it would be them who inspects. And to be perfectly honest with you, they don't have the manpower to do it. So, you're just sort of stuck having to trust that the state is doing their job. And I think the only thing that we can do is just to keep, is to, is to remind the state of what their job is and that they need to be doing it. It's, there's not really any local jurisdiction that, that you guys, that I'm aware of, that you can assert. Now, you know, I, I think you've had, you've had some attorneys involved in the past, from what I understand or from what I've gathered. And doesn't sound like they've had much success in breaking that wall down either. So, I mean, it's just, it's just, you know, it's, it's a local versus a state jurisdictional issue. And, and I don't know, the state frankly isn't going to want, that they're probably not going to, they don't want, they want to manage this at the state level. They don't want to manage this on a community by community level. And their rationale for that is that because water crosses bound, you know, town boundaries, the, the streams, the watersheds are multi, you know, multi-town watersheds in most cases. And, and that they're better hand, they have, they're, you know, they're better equipped both from a financial and a technical standpoint to manage these regional issues. I, I think that's in it, that's it in a nutshell. But it's, I mean, our, I think really the only thing that we can do is just to, is to keep reminding of the state of what their responsibilities are to make sure that they're doing this. And, you know, and, you know, it does seem, you know, I can, I think it can seem from a local perspective that their state is somewhat permissive in their permits. You know, they, they may or may not be, I, you know, I'm not, I can't really judge that because I can see it from both sides. I, you know, I'm not, I can't really judge that because I can see it from both sides. But but I think that's just the world that we're living in.
Well, it's good to know that we have some, something we can do. And I think if we request the report that you suggested and we stay on top of this, then, you know, that's, that's within our, our wheelhouse, something that we can do.
Yep, for sure.
So any other questions for Peter? Peter, you, in, in, in a way have been re- very reassuring. And at least we're doing the things that we can do. And as always, totally appreciate your expertise and forthrightness and a pleasure. Thank you so very much.
My pleasure, Mark. Thank you again for the opportunity and to talk to you, to you all. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, Peter.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Be well.
You too.
Bye bye.
All right, so next item on our agenda is the Area 58 discussion. Is Mr. Goulet with us tonight or somebody from Area 58?
I don't see anybody on the call. We did send them the Zoom information. Maybe we should just table this until the next meeting and I can reach out to Mr. Goulart and confirm him for the, excuse me, for the March 14th date.
Perfect, that sounds great.
Yeah, and I think I, that's, that is becoming increasingly important as maybe we're getting much nearer going back to live meetings unless there's another surge along the way. So suddenly.
Mr. Goulart did express that we shouldn't have any difficulty if we did want to try the hybrid option. He was very, you know, upfront about that, that the only real need would be the dedicated IP address. An IT professional has told us that that's not a big deal. So I think that Area 58 will be very cooperative in that regard. And one thing that we do need to figure out, we are having some issues with the projector in the main meeting room. I need to figure out if it's something that IT-wise that Michael can assist us with or if it's something that we may need to have the company who installed the projector come in and look at. I think it's maybe on picking up on the wrong Wi-Fi network.
Maybe we could just have Area 58 come in and take a look at it.
Oh, that's an option. We can see, I'm happy to reach out to Rich about the next meeting and I can find out.
I would like to see a couple of things come out, though. I've heard that we can do this. We know there's other towns that are doing the hybrid. But I would like to see definitively what it's going to cost. I don't believe it's just getting the IP address. I believe that there may be some equipment, at least when Duxbury went into it, they had to buy some equipment. And I'd like to see a, a date, whatever that date is, whether it's July 1st or March 1st. As long as we have a date that we're shooting at.
Okay. I can discuss that with Rich, too, so that he's prepared for our next meeting date.
I think it's important that we let our residents know, too. You know, there are, not a lot, but there are people coming in saying, why not you meeting in person? The planning board does it, the Board of Health does it, the Bylaw Review Committee does it. I think there's going to be more pressure for us to get in, and I think the hybrid approach would be the solution.
Right, and if there are equipment costs, it would be good to know about those sooner rather than later so that we can plan for them for the upcoming budget.
Yes.
All right, that sounds good. All right, so next item, council on aging location for senior exercise classes. I see Colleen is with us. I think that there was some concern about the location, but I believe that's all been squared away.
Yes.
Colleen, are we good to go?
They can go back to the old townhouse as per the Board of House.
Yeah, I, I think we're happy. I just thought I'd show up in case you have any questions for me.
You're going to shovel the walkway?
I've done it before.
One thing, as in a, a sort of a adjunct of that is Wi-Fi at the old townhouse. Because we'd like to move forward with putting a new door locks on that you can use the Wi-Fi with, so we know who's going in there, when they're in there. And that way we can keep track. There's still noise coming that people are getting in there. And, you know, it's supposed to be closed. So I think we, I'd like to see us move forward with that.
When somebody went out there today to do some more sampling, they did make us aware that one of the doors was wide open, not the door with the little lock pad. And they said it appeared like no one had tried to force entry, but rather that someone must have left it a little bit ajar, so.
That concerns me, you know, that's what we've got to stop.
Yeah. Bree got some pricing for us for Wi-Fi there. Unfortunately, you need to get a phone line installed as well. It looks like it would cost about $110 per month. So if that's something that you want to go ahead with, we could. But I just wanted to make people aware of the, the cost. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, that building was not on the list in our agreement with the cable provider. And even if it were, I believe that that's only for basic television service. So say like your public safety buildings, if they needed access to see like local news or something like that. But Bree did have it priced out for us, and it's looking like about $110 per month.
Well, my feeling is we ought to do it. We ought to have internet in there. And maybe we could talk to the Historical Society, see if we could share it, if there's anything we could do like that. Supposedly, they have internet there. But I'm not aware that they have a line going in, so I'd like to know more about that.
Okay. So.
Hi, John, can you hear me? It's Bree. There's no Wi-Fi going into the building and there's no phone.
Then we need to clarify with the Historical Society what they mean when they say they have internet access.
They stopped paying jobs a long time ago.
They might be using somebody's almost like a hotspot.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Or a neighboring house, there's Wi-Fi, they might be logging on to that. But I know, like Xfinity, if you have them at home for your provider, you can oftentimes pick up on a Wi-Fi signal. So I think that's maybe what they mean, because Bree did look into it and they're not hardwired for anything.
I think for me, it's, it's like an insurance policy.
I, I did reach out to Mike Lemieux. And he got back to me and said to call him, and I haven't followed up on that. So I can follow up on that just to get some idea of what they actually have done.
Okay, thank you, Colleen.
Yeah, okay, because they started to have their bills turned over to me because they didn't want to pay them. So I got it, I took over the light bill. And that's what the problem was with the heat bill was, I didn't, they were having it automatically paid out of their checking account. I didn't have access to that. I gave them instructions on what they needed to do. And they didn't do it, and that's why the gas company came in and shut the power.
Well, they, you know, it got turned off and now we have mold and that cost us about eight grand to fix that.
And there's a very large bill that's owed by them to the, to Eversource. I've got a new service under us, under the town of Plimpton. And I didn't have to pay for that, so. They did get us in there. I do have the amount if you want to come in. But they were having all of the utility bills pushed over to us. Fully but surely, and then I Comcast never came. Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so are we all set then, Colleen, on council on aging exercise?
I believe so. I, I contacted the instructor and they're going to start up next Wednesday.
Excellent, great, thank you very much. Okay, next item, consideration of first refusal option under MGL Chapter 61A, Section 14 pertaining to Assessor's Map and Parcel 8-2-29, Ring Road, Plimpton, and Assessor's Map Parcel 8-1-1, Ring Road, Plimpton. Mark, did you want to speak on these?
Yeah, glad to. This is a couple of solar projects down at the end of Ring Road. And I think we heard about these quite a while ago, but with COVID and the governor's edicts on, on, on those things, the, the clock, the four-month clock for us to make a decision on right of first refusal didn't start. And I think now it did start with the governor's stuff, no longer there, probably in December. All the material in, in terms of the, the project and the purchase and sale agreement went to various boards and committees in town. Liz took care of that. No one responded that they were interested in the town purchasing the property. The one step left is the document that we created four years ago and our procedure and process on making a decision of right and first refusal. That document includes a, a public hearing before we make a decision. And so I, I, I strongly recommend we delay, have a public hearing next time and then would be able to make the decision next time. Really, the thing I wanted to mention to my fellow selectmen, the document that we created four years ago, actually March 8th, 2018, the way that's set up, all the stuff in italics are the state requirements, things that we have to do. The non-italics things are things that we decided we wanted as part of our procedure, but not required as law. So the public hearing is not required by law, but I think we rightfully so. When we wrote this four years ago, wanted a public hearing in there, the chance not only for town boards, commissions and committees to comment, but the general public to comment. So we'll have that chance in two weeks. And I think how we'll want to vote is, is probably pretty clear unless something else comes up and we can get that done in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you, Mark. So Liz, our next meeting is 3:14. What time can we schedule this? Can we schedule this for like 6:30 or 7:00?
I was thinking 6:30 would be good.
All right, so we'll put together the hearing notice and do whatever advertisements and postings that are required for that. Mark, I looked at the document and I don't know if maybe on a future agenda, I don't know if this is an option or not, but I was wondering, we talk about nonprofit conservation organizations as someone that we could assign our right to. What about assigning rights to a nonprofit for affordable housing? Is that something that we could do as well?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I, you know, usually the nonprofit that these are assigned to are land trusts, local or regional land trusts. I don't know, I don't know. Certainly something we can look into, and if we feel like we want to adjust any of this, we can.
Okay, so I wonder, Liz, if we could just get an answer from council, whether or not that is a possibility? And then if it is, maybe we can put it on a future agenda and talk about it. And then if not, it's just what it is. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so next item, town meeting preparations.
So we're still open for receiving warrant articles. I've put together a spreadsheet to kind of track some of those. So I'll send around an updated spreadsheet later this week that just kind of shows what we've received so far in the way of articles. Also, Barry and I have been in touch with one another and we decided to reach out to East West again for this upcoming town meeting. They are the company that has provided our, like, IT services essentially for town meeting, like the microphones and all of that. And they have enabled us to have the setup in both rooms. Barry and I discussed it and both seem to think that where things are just starting to kind of loosen up now with respect to COVID, we wanted to make sure that we booked their services and kind of anticipating ahead that we're probably looking at another year of using both rooms at Denit, just so people aren't packed in there. So we've gone ahead and made those arrangements with them. And it'll be the same like it has been for the last two years in terms of the services that they're providing for us. So otherwise, more to come on that. Things are really going to start picking up in the month of March as far as the budgeting discussion and all of that.
Great, thanks, Liz. Okay, next, boarding committee, open seats and upcoming reappointment processes.
So we had basically revamped our process for the Board of Selectmen's appointments to various boards and committees in town. After, anytime you appoint somebody to an open seat, we update our, our spreadsheet and then we share it with the town clerk's office to make sure that everyone's on the same page with who's on which boards or committees. We do have a few openings. And then there's also a situation coming up with, I believe, the Board of Library Trustees. So they may be approaching us for an upcoming me- meeting, needing somebody to be appointed until election time so that they can have a quorum and continue to function. As far as the reappointment process for town employees, there seems to have been a disconnect in, in years past with who needed to be reappointed and who didn't. So Bree was actually the one that kind of put this on my radar. She was trying to be proactive and get out ahead of it this year. So I spoke with Greg Corbo and he has said that anyone who's customarily reappointed on an annual basis, now this is as far as town employees go. If they've already been sworn in, unless it was somebody like at the start of a new contract term or something like that, he does not believe that they need to go down to the town clerk's office every single year to be sworn in. But you could still reappoint them and we could let the clerk's office know that that action has been taken. So we'll try to make sure that this year that it's a smoother process. And I'll make sure that I have something in writing from him, kind of outlining that process so that we don't have any difficulties or miscommunications with other offices. And one thing I wanted to add that Bree was also taking care of, letting boards and committees know which seats on their particular committees are going to be up for potential reappointment effective July 1. So we're going to get out ahead of that now. And if somebody doesn't want to be reappointed on July 1, they can let her know. But we're going to try to have everything kind of laid out ahead of time so that we avoid any confusion or issues right around the end of the fiscal year.
That sounds great, and thank you, Bree, for being proactive on those. All right, warrants paid, is that you, Bree, or is Liz going to report that?
Oops, sorry, no, it's me. Warrant paid, totaling $32,338.04. And it was kind of big because we had the franchise fee to Area 58, where we get the check from Comcast and then the money gets turned around and sent over to Area 58. That was large. We also had a lot of Eversource, so. Our gas bill, it's quite high. I'm going to look into that on why, and if we can get some costs down. Our gas bill's up to about $1,900 a month right now. And I know it's high. You too. What's going on everywhere? Everyone's home, but that's about it.
All right. Thank you.
Is that gas for the townhouse or for all the buildings?
No, that's just the townhouse.
Wow.
It has jumped astronomical. Yes, I think the police station is running at about 17. The rate is very high. I don't know what the, the library also seems to be high. I just got info from the town accountant on what we're paying ever-source gas. So I'm going to have it highlighted to what each, what the library cost is and what ours is.
I mean, I know the price of propane's just gone through the roof, and I'm sure natural gas as well. Like, for a building that's open 20 hours a month, I wonder if we should be turning down the thermostats more in the townhouse in particular, in the hours that no one's there.
I have that on a schedule now where it does not, it will only kick on if it comes above, it gets below 60. I also have the holiday schedule, and I can access that from my laptop. So if somebody was, it does shut off. Excuse me. Excuse me. It does turn off also after 3 o'clock. And then all the offices know that if you're in after 3 o'clock, there's a way to turn it and tap on the meter to make it come back on again and put the little guide back in the house, as they say.
So, so not to bela-, not to belabor this, but even with those measures, that's the amount we're spending a month?
I don't have offices on on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and a holiday. It's on a holiday schedule.
Yeah, it's all automated. We had that switched over a while back through Green Communities brand, and Bree has done a good job as far as communicating with that company. So it is pretty well, you know, if you come in exceptionally early on a particular morning, like, the office will be cold. It's, it does work. Or if you come in after hours, same thing.
Bree override it. It's just as, I've, I've put notes, I found at the lodge meeting room, I'm not sure who was in there, I put a note over the meter, if you turn it on, turn it down when you leave, it ran all weekend because somebody turned it on. But then that's a big room to heat. And they turned it, they cranked it to get the heat on. So I might reach out to any board of committees that if you are using it, let me know. When I leave, I'll turn it on for you. Just remember to shut it off.
Well, can you see? Bree, can't you see, let's say, on Saturday morning, whether it's been turned up on your laptop?
I'd have, I'd have to go in and check it.
Oh, you'd have to go into the office?
No, because I have it, I, my laptop, Michael has it, so I can.
So you can see it from home?
So I can see it from home. Yeah, thank you. I didn't realize it, and I kept hearing it on. I thought it's awfully warm. And somebody had it turned up to 73. I can also make that so it doesn't go above 71. I can control each office and each zone.
Right.
But, you know, the, the front door to the, the townhouse, we, I found cold air was coming through. Steve did, we put like a barrier, and then we put plastic over that front door because the air was just flowing through. I thought that's just sucking out heat.
Well, one of the things that we want to do is use some of the oppo money to put in a new sliding door there, and also have that under Wi-Fi with locks. Bree, what was the Area 58 payment?
The franchise fee, $13,300, I'm sorry.
And the gas was how much?
$1857.47. The old townhouse, no one.
Didn't you say the warrants were 30?
Technology group we paid. We have the new phone system.
Well, if we're going to do the warrants, we ought to read off the amounts. If we're, if we're not going to read the amounts, we ought to just kill the warrants.
I think after the Municipal Modernization Act was passed and then rewritten, I think you're supposed to acknowledge the amounts of the warrants, like, at each meeting. I don't know that you need to get very granular or what level of detail, but I know that at least the total.
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Is supposed to be acknowledged.
That's the amount, correct? Not each?
Right, the amount, and that way, that way people know. And then if they wanted to come in and look at anything individuals, like, they would, they would know what was going on, and they could do that.
And let's update it. We haven't had a meeting in a while. This is a lot of.
Right. There are a lot of bills.
A lot of bills. K2R was 3,000. I have the article for Bristol Engineering Advisors, that was 4,300. A local computer, which is a monthly edge communications. And the old phone system, we were paying, playing catch-up there, that was 1453, because bills hadn't been paid from them. I was holding off on those until the phone systems worked properly. And our regular ever-source bills, our regular, we still have a small rise in though. A lot of those $10.
All right, we need to move on.
So are you, are you okay with it, John? Because it's like a month worth of bills.
Yeah, yeah, let's move on.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you, Bree, for that. All right. Liz, town administrators' updates, including COVID.
So the Board of Health has pulled back the restrictions due to COVID. So that's, that's good. And as far as other updates, we have 27 applicants for the police chief's position. And early next week, myself and the preliminary screening committee are going to be meeting with Bernie Lynch to go through all of the applications and set up a preliminary interview schedule and structure and that sort of thing. So that's exciting. It appears on the surface, I don't think any of us have gone through anything in depth, but at least on the surface, it appears that we have a lot of qualified applicants, including two internal candidates. So I think that we'll be in good shape on that and in good hands moving forward. As far as correspondence, we have a request from the Police Department for the selectmen to declare their 2003 ATV as surplus property. It is unrepairable at this point, and the chief is going to work with Plimpton Cycles on getting an estimate as to its value. But they are requesting that you please declare it as surplus. So for this particular piece of correspondence, I actually noted it on the agenda so that you could take action on it. So if you could vote to, to make that declaration, if you're comfortable with that, that would be helpful.
Any questions for Liz or concerns on that? Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we declare the 2003 ATV from the, the Police Department as surplus property.
A second.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay.
Then also printed on the agenda for correspondence is to ratify the snow and ice deficit spending. So that on February 10th, we received a request from the Highway Department asking if our chair, Christine Joy, could please declare a snow and ice emergency so that they could continue treating our roadways and deficit spend. The chair so made that declaration, and now we are looking to take a vote to ratify that.
All right. Any questions or concerns on that one? All right. I'll make a motion that we ratify the snow and ice deficit spending. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. Anything else for us, Liz, on correspondence?
So we have a letter here from Silver Lake Regional School, and you've already taken this action. So I will let them know that nothing has changed, but they are looking for support in the way of use of some of our ARPA funds for the HVAC improvement projects for the middle and high schools. This is the one, we discussed it at a public meeting a while back, and you had taken a vote essentially supporting that. We estimate our portion of the cost to be somewhere around 190K. It might actually come out to a hair less than that, based on some other funding sources that they're looking into. So if you're still okay with that and nothing has changed, I'll just let them know that we still support that. And that would come out of our county allotment, not out of our local NEU money.
Okay. John and Mark, are you still okay with supporting that HVAC?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. And just so anyone's listening at home, the ARPA funds have very limited use on how the town can spend them. And this was one of the accepted uses. So it really was a good fit for us to, to use this money for that project. All right.
I have just one thing on the police before we leave it.
Sure.
I thought we had agreed that we were going to have an offices meeting to just review, you know, why we're going outside for a search. And.
I think that they are pretty clear on that. I met with the president of the union, and he said everything was, was fine, that everybody's happy with the way that things are proceeding.
I still think we owe it to the.
If you wanted to meet with them, I can give you his info.
I'd rather meet with all offices like Matt has done a couple of years.
John, that's fine. I mean, I have been, I gave Dan Cranshaw all of my information, and he indicated he was good and supported everything that we were doing over there and that, you know, they were happy with the process. That was always, I, I think that this is not something new. I think that they knew that this was always in the works, that it was our intent to, to hire.
I think there's a lot of chatter out there, and I think it's just something that would make it easier for them to hear from the selectmen. But if, you know, if you guys don't want to do it, fine.
So who's the chatter? Is it chatter in the department or chatter?
Chatter around the town. Chatter around the town. People lobbying for different people.
Well, I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about chatter around town, as long as.
No, but I'm more concerned about the offices, that they have a clear understanding of why the selectmen are doing this process.
Well, John, I, I, I hear you, but I, I feel like we've been pretty clear in meetings. It's certainly been in the newspaper as well. And we've been explicit, actually, this latest thing and previous thing, the degree to which we're interested.
But Mark, that's not the tone we had when this was four weeks ago. We haven't had a meeting since. The tone was that, yeah, we probably should do something like that.
I'm happy to, to schedule something, Liz, if we want to get together. I mean, could we even do it as a Zoom call with?
You can reach out to the union president and, and to the acting chief and see if they want to set something up for people.
Yeah, yeah.
Staffing issues. I'm not sure of the turnout, depending on when we do it, because they have several people right now that are completing what's referred to as the Bridge Academy. And they need to do that in order to remain certified police officers because of that new police reform law. So we have a few different officers currently enrolled in that Bridge Academy. So I don't know what that means scheduling-wise for them. I had a meeting with the acting chief and the sergeant today regarding their staffing and what positions they had open and what shifts they need to fill. So I know that they're working around some stuff like that, but I'm happy to reach out to them and see what might work. And maybe we could set something up that seems to work for a majority of people if they're interested.
Yeah.
Not to further cloud the issue, but just in terms of scheduling and the challenges and adding more work and time to the officers, if there's trouble scheduling, I wonder if we couldn't do this as a memo or a letter or just another way to communicate what our feeling on this has been all along.
Yeah, let's try to do something. And Liz, if they want to set something up in person, I'll make myself available. Just let me know if you want to do it during the day or, you know, 5, 5:30, whatever. I'll make myself available. We could do, we can do Zoom. And then if for some reason it doesn't come together, you know, maybe we can do it with a smaller group, but still do a follow-up memo or letter explaining, you know, the process and, and, you know, why we're doing this.
Okay.
All right. Does that sound good, John? Does that sound like a good plan? I mean, I don't know as if we're ever going to be able to, or, I mean, there's always going to be chatter out there. People have their favorites, and there's not a lot we can do about that. I mean, if the officers understand, I'm more concerned than that.
I'm going to let it pass, Christine. I just let it pass.
Okay. All right.
Christine, we do have here, also in correspondence, we have a letter from Kimberly Russo, resigning from the Bylaw Review Committee.
Okay.
And the letter is dated February 24th, 2022.
All right. Well, I'm sorry to hear that. She was a really great member of that committee, but I understand she's got a lot going on, and we certainly appreciate her service to the town. So with regret, we accept her resignation from Bylaw Review. So does Allen have somebody else lined up?
I don't think yet.
We have a couple of people we're talking to.
Great. Good to hear. Okay. All right. So now we're on to minutes from January 31st. John, did you have a chance to read the minutes? Mark read or wrote them?
Yeah, I had just one, one comment that I wanted, the discussion of the name change. And I sent it to you, Mark.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. And I will, I'll make that change.
You want me to read it? That's fine.
Yeah, what is it? No, what is it, John? What's your suggestion change?
Discussion of name change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board was the title of the comment on the minute. And I had both Selectmen Russo and Selectwomen Joy preferred to keep to the tradition of using the term Board of Selectmen. This was after the previous, I didn't write on this what the lead-in was, Mark. I'm sorry. Maybe you have it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. But with that, with that change, I was fine.
Great.
And I, I'll fix that and get that to Bree tomorrow.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from January 31st as amended by John. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second roll, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Our next meeting will be on March 14th, where we'll be conducting a hearing at 6:30 on the 61A two applications that we have ahead of us or in front of us on Ring Road. And then I think that's all that we have on that agenda. We'll have a 5:45 executive session two for more contract negotiations prior to that. And so we're on to selectmen's rates.
Well. Well, given the situation in Ukraine, it's sometimes hard to get local, so I'm going to stay local. It's hard to get pumped up at times, but I think the rave is that we're finally through the the land deal with Middleborough, where the Mass Legislation has approved, and it's all signed and sealed, so we now can use a piece of Plimpton land that was, that is owned by Middleborough as our parking lot for Two Brooks Reserve, Preserve. And I'm not sure who's leading that, Mark, maybe you know, as far as how the clearing and citing of that's going to be done.
Yeah, that's Open Space Committee, and that's an ongoing thing. The, the emphasis, the priority is going to be on getting the Prospect Road parking done first, and then later on, move on to the Soul Street Park.
I see that they, they actually, it's not paving, I guess, what is it, crush zone of some kind on Prospect?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So my rave is, we're finally almost there.
Yay, one step closer, a big one.
So my rave is I, I cannot avoid the global view on, on this one, and looked at a series of photographs from around the world of the response to the thing in the Ukraine and that sense of community, worldwide community solidarity. Somehow, even in the horror of all of this, a sense of community and hopefulness and actually a reiteration of the, the wisdom of free and democratic societies. I mean, that collective response is heartening.
No doubt. My rave is for the Governor, Charlie Baker, and a House Bill that, that he has proposed. And this is House Bill four-three-six-one. And what it is, there was, the Commonwealth, oh, read it from the, the cover page, that the Commonwealth did much better than they anticipated with budgets projections, and they ended up with, in a really strong fiscal position. So what they're doing is they're offering substantial tax relief to many of our lowest income residents. They're, they are proposing upping the amount on a circuit breaker for senior citizens that would allow them to, to not pay taxes and have more money in their pocket for those that are making under a certain dollar number. There's also tax credits increases for childcare and some other good things in here. So if, you know, you want to read the legislation, it's online, it's House Number four-three-six-one. And if you feel like this is something that would help you, I would suggest you reach out to Kathy Zanatra and let her know that you support this legislation and, and hopefully they can get it passed. So that's all I've got. All right, so that concludes the open session portion of our meeting. So we will be going in, back into executive session for the purpose of number seven. So I will make a motion that we adjourn an open session and return, and go into executive session for the purpose of number seven, and this is regarding public record requests made by Cameron Green dated February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, seeking executive session minutes of the Board of Selectmen for the following dates, January twenty-fourth, January thirty-first of this year. We'll be discussing to review, approve, and/or release the minutes, and votes may be taken. So motion to go into executive session and upon completion of executive session to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, so we will go into executive session and then we will adjourn the meeting.